Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, next item is item number three, review of the process for updating the city's future land use plan and map. Mr. Bill Osmond, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kristin has given you, what I've entitled originally was notes for me for this meeting, but I've given everybody a copy you should have. And I just wanted to start off by reminding you that at your last meeting, the first meeting, of looking at an update of our future land use plan and map, we assured you that we were not going to put you through the long, drawn-out task that we had to go through dealing with the development code. That this would be much more succinct and undertaking. And what we did, as you remember, at that meeting a month ago, was kind of provide an introduction, namely, we pointed out what the city currently has in place with the zoning map. In other words, this is what the city has said, looking at what the zoning would be. I've got a copy of it on that table. I think we have previously given you a copy of it. We also, at that last meeting, provided to you the draft that Hughes Ray Company had done on its ideas for a future land use map for the city. And you have a copy of that. And if you brought it with you, great. And if not, maybe you can share with your neighbor. And if you have questions at any point that you want to go look at the map, it's the first one on the table over behind Mr. Flure here, back toward the window. But what we also did at that first meeting, as you remember, was we said, okay, about a year and a half ago, we had a group of citizens, a couple of you on that committee. Mayor Pro Tim Bratner was the chair of it. He was elected by the other committee members to be the chair. And this was the committee we had to look at updating the city's comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is a state-required plan, twenty-year broad window of what the city or county or government would want to see, taking place from a comprehensive standpoint in several areas. We gave you a copy of that. Didn't ask you to bring it with you tonight. But you do have a copy of it. And of course, it has goals in there to be accomplished on a year-by-year basis. And we've accomplished most of those goals we had for the first year. But the comprehensive plan, as we look at the future land use plan that you will be developing, certainly needs to take into account what this committee had looked at a year and a half ago, in their view of what should be kind of overall goals, objectives, types of development and so forth in the city and where this might occur. But what we wanted to do tonight is to kind of back away from that view of what had been done by a government committee and by staff and by the elected officials, and bring in and talk with you some people that with what they have going on, certainly would be pertinent for you to hear what you have to say. Now, trying to get about a dozen, eight to ten people together for any one night gets to be a problem because all of us have conflicts. We had two people that would have been here, which we've got a good encounter for them. We'll introduce in a minute. But J.R. Charles, who basically is an industrial development person in Carroll County, and Daniel Jackson, that most of you know, that's the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. He deals, among other things, certainly with commercial and industrial growth. Both of them are in Savannah, and statewide meeting. I had talked with Connor Pope, who is Norfolk Southern's key person in dealing with state and local governments for the Norfolk Southern Corporation. He's headquartered in Washington, spends a lot of time in Atlanta, and had made arrangements for him to talk with us by phone. That fell through about an hour ago. Now, I do want to say thanks to Kristin, George Scala. They worked for about an hour and a half today getting the arrangements so we'd be able to plug him in and everybody would be able to hear what he was saying from his end of the line. But he called me about twenty to five and said he was sorry to report that Delta had changed his departure time. And by the time we started meeting, he wouldn't be waiting, but he would be on board, getting ready to fly. So he will plan to come to Temple at our next meeting. We'll arrange that so that, because as we talked before, you can't talk about what the future land use is going to be in Temple and what our future plans are without taking into account the Norfolk Southern Railroad. And so we want to hear what their plans are, both from an operational standpoint, anything dealing with problems that we've got with the cause of our grade-level crossings and maybe with the longer side tracks and so forth. So he'll be with us next time. But in a few minutes, we will go through with several people. You can see you've got four people here. We may have a fifth coming in before we get through to the program. And what I've asked them to do is, from their own particular perspective, is to talk about looking at their future operations, their view for future activities and development in Temple. And as we introduce each of these people, you'll hear what you have to say. I'll just touch base with a couple of things, whether they're just in it. But, and one of the people we've got, my left, Matt Roden, that you know, is here to be talking about, from his perspective, downtown now. I had made contact with the, Mr. Tracy Martin, on the other side of the railroad tracks. And she said, when I called her, she said, well, she was getting ready to go to Houston and wouldn't be back in time to be here for this meeting. But put it out with future meetings. So we will have her with us at future time also. But what we got, if you look at the second item that shows my name, is I just want to call a couple of things to your attention. Anybody else? What I did was, in the memo, basically is point out that what these individuals are focusing on, and as I pointed out in my written report, don't pay any attention to the sequence that we've got, that meaning one is viewed as being more or less important to the other. As I explained, Connor Pope was first, but we tried to get him before he got on the plane. And it turned out not to work. But just very briefly introduce these people that will start off in just a minute with Ben Skipper. Ben is the head of the Carroll County Community Development Department. We have a lot of contact with his department because the city has Carroll County to, we submit building plans to them. They do inspections for us, new construction, and are involved with us in a number of ways. But also, Ben's concerns about the development that's going on adjacent to Temple. That if you look just south of I-20, which is beyond the city limits real quick, and with his department, with the Carroll tomorrow, we've had with all of the county government, a good working relationship since I've been here, looking at how do we, from the standpoint of the city and the county, we get the best use of the property south of I-20. And we'll talk about that. We've mentioned that to you before, in terms of looking at certain possibilities on industrial development, commercial development. We also with Ryan Boyd, the chamber, she will comment on that also. I've mentioned Matt Roden, and of course, we're all familiar with the fact that they've got a lot of activity, they have plans for downtown, and he will talk with us concerning that. And then we have the West Georgia Regional Library. Would it then become yet? Both because of the importance of the branch library. I think that is a great anchor to have in our downtown area. Don't know what the future will owe, from the standpoint of growth and expansion. But certainly, the library gives us a really important, we'll call it, part of the cultural community that, and he'll talk about the library and looking at some of their plans overall, and also as it relates to Temple. And then, as I mentioned, representative from the chamber, and who will focus on some things with industrial development and other development in Carroll County, including the Temple area. I'll make a report to you, folks, several things on industrial development after her report. You will hear more on this at your next meeting. We will have J.R. Charles with us. And I did not try to get anybody on terms of residential construction. Because all of us recognize that we've got a lot of residential construction in the community. And I think as we look at future land use, the important task, I think, from the standpoint of this body, is how do we make sure that we certainly are taking care of growth possibilities for residential? But how do we make sure that we set aside areas in Temple so that as we have population grow, they will be able to have their needs met from a standpoint of commercial, for shopping and employment, as well as jobs in terms of office buildings, industrial plants, businesses and so forth? But we'll talk a little bit about that. I expect in just a little while, that we will be joined by the representative from the Three Rivers Planning Commission, Jenny Bradley, who's planning director of Three Rivers Regional Commission. And as you know, the regional commission, they have about twelve counties that they serve. Headquartered in Griffin, another office over in Franklin. And she will talk to us a little bit from a regional perspective, but also how we fit as they look at this from a regional standpoint. So with Mr. Mayor, with those opening comments, I'll turn it back over to you and then proceed with what Mr. Skipper wants to share.
Well, don't worry, go ahead, Mr. Skipper.
Well, Ben Skipper is, like I say, he's worked with Ben during almost four years I've been here. And his department's been very good to work with. And while he has responsibilities, basically, in the unincorporated area, he certainly has an interest in making sure that the municipalities grow in a good fashion. So I'm just turning it over to him. And I ask him to focus on those parts of development, the land area immediately adjacent to our city limits. Because among other things, there needs to be coordination between what the city would be looking at on land use and what the county would be looking at as we are joined. And as well as other comments he wants to share with us.
Sure. Thank you, Bill. When the county, we updated our future land use plan and comp plan, exactly what you're doing just a few years ago. And working with Bill, we labeled an area industrial, south of I-20. And the road just slipped and he built its own.
Luke Road, East Loop and West Loop Road.
Right, Luke Road. We labeled that area industrial for the city of Temple. And since that time, we've had a developer buy track of land within that area and looking to buy more. And he wanted to build a subdivision there. And I told him, you know, we were just really trying to work with Temple, you know, for that to be industrial for Temple. And I got him in touch with J.R. at Carroll tomorrow. And hopefully, they're working through, maybe, you know, where he can still come out and make a profit on his property. And the city can have more industrial property within the city. Right now, it's in the unincorporated portion of the county. We don't have the utilities that the city does. So obviously, they're going to annex into the city to get water and sewer and police protection. You know, those are the benefits of being in a city. So we're working with those. That's one of those real hand examples of why you have the map and why you plan, is so where we can plan those resources for water and sewer, police, fire, you know, and direct those out there. Now, far as the county, we're going to be low-density residential around what will be a minimum four-acre lot. The county is not going to get in the sewer business. So from that standpoint, we're going to be at a minimum four acres. And any other subdivision development that would come in, the county health board has changed the septic tank rules to place a minimum half-acre lot of replacement area. Now, why this is important is not so much Temple, but in the Villarica area, in north of I-20, the Rainy Road, all the way back up to Paulding, the Flat Rock Road area where we have a lot of rock. We are now seeing, you know, the houses that were built twenty-plus years ago, the septic tanks were failing. Because, you know, they're twenty years old, those lines have filled up. It's time to put in the expansion. Well, if they're on a half-acre lot, which is a hundred foot wide by two hundred foot deep, you've got your house, you've got your driveway, you've got your carport in the back, a little utility building, where's your replacement line go? That's the problem that we're having. So that's why, you know, with those guys, that's why, and so what we're having to do is let other property owners are allowing them to put their septic on their property, you know, through mutual land agreements. I have one in Hickory Level community where the septic tank failed. And now they pump it under the street, out into a gentleman's cow pasture. You know, they were good enough neighbors to let him, you know, now there's easements across over there. So it's really one of those things, you know, the general public doesn't see. You know what I mean? It's one of those things, it's underground, but we're still planning. So, and the reason we're planning is, is when those septics, you know, boil over and they become uncontrollable, then they get in the water system, then they drain downstream. Now, you know, so now the water treatment plants have to treat those. It's treatable, yes, but it's just another one of those things that we're trying to prevent. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, if we know it's going to happen and we have proof that it's going to happen, then let's plan ahead. So that's why we're reserving a half acre by deed that you can't build on, you can't put your swimming pool in it, you can't build your garage in it. That has to be, so twenty years from now, when your septic fails, that land is set aside and reserved for those septic lots. Now, what does all this mean? Once you do all that, it puts you at basically about a minimum one-acre lot. When you get to a minimum one-acre lot, a friend out here in development probably knows that, that prices out a lot of developments because of your construction costs. With every, from the recession to now, everything has just gone up absorbively. So where, you know, in the past, the cost of construction of a home may have been around eighty dollars a square foot. Y'all see now over a hundred?
I've not built many houses, no money would be made, but yeah.
But right, but builders are telling me they're in the one-twenty's, you know, from one-hundred to one-twenty's a square foot. So when you're at that cost of construction, what does that mean? That's why we're not seeing any new developments come out of the ground. That's why I'm telling you to say. So what the development that we're seeing at the county level, in and around Temple, is all of these lots that are existing that were bank-foreclosed lots. And so if I buy this lot for ten thousand dollars from the bank, and it costs me forty thousand dollars to produce the same lot, starting from scratch, as a builder, I can't compete a two-thousand-square-foot house with a forty-thousand-dollar more input cost than the guy that bought the lot for ten thousand. So you're, so we're in the transition through the recession still. So until these lots burn through and the developers build out the remaining lots, and the county still has several subdivisions that are still being built out. The Trademark Homes has bought a couple of them. They're probably one of our bigger ones right now that's buying up these lots and building through. But until those lots are gone, you're not going to see anyone start new construction. So we still may be three years out before we see that, with the rate that we're going. And when I say that rate, in oh-eight, I think the county's lowest might have been thirty-five building permits in a single year for single-family residential. We're going to be over two-hundred now. So, and that was what I was telling a council member earlier, you know, statistically, it looks like, man, we're doing great. But if you back up to the eighties, and you look from the late eighties all the way to present, it seems like about four-hundred and seventy-five is the mean. So just under five-hundred homes per year is where Carroll County has been averaging. So that's why I say, it's great from where we was in oh-eight, but we're still halfway from where we were in a normal market. And as we've all watched the news and watched Trump, they're pushing interest rates down. I was in the real estate business, and we developed subdivisions in oh-eight. I was on that side of the tape when they started pushing those interest rates down. So I know what it looks like coming out of, you know, for me, I'm scared because I kind of see the same patterns. Stock market was oversold, you know, the stock market's now twenty-five thousand, and we're pushing rates down. So I think builders are probably going to, and so I say all that to say, I think builders may be apprehensive until they get through the election before you see new starts. Someone coming to you saying, hey, I want to do a hundred and fifty lots of division. I think they're probably just going to be, timeout, let's wait and see what happens. Commercial and industrial-wise, people are constantly looking at you. They're constantly calling my office, trying to figure out how to get into the Johnson property. You know, the RV, the Johnson property, and then they're looking at the track that goes out where Janus is. You know, they're constantly looking there in those areas and then trying to figure out how to get near to you. We have a truck repair, he's moved twice in Carrollton because he's outgrown both spots. So, you know, and that's where she's coming in from Carroll tomorrow. It's a local, homegrown business, you know, he rented a spot, outgrown it, rented a spot and outgrown it, and he started off as a mobile mechanic in a pickup truck. Now he needs a shop in two or three acres, just for the, you know, for the queue to be, you know, when they bring these trucks in. So those guys are looking up here, trying to figure out how to get, you know, somewhere in around Temple. Just what I see, I'm also over the parks for the county. It seems like Temple, I mean, Highway one thirteen is the new truck route. Just, you know, me going back and forth to Carrollton, you know, all the oversized loads are being pushed up one thirteen. The trucks are coming up and down one thirteen. So it's just, it just seems like a lot of that type business is using one thirteen to get product in and out of Carroll. And they're using it. So with those guys, everybody that's chasing the trucks coming with them, which, you know, you already have some of that with the truck stops, those things, you know, the mobile repair guy, he's looking at trying to get to the interstate to service these vehicles. And I'm sure he's got probably bigger users. But the ones that we're talking to are local business owners that are at that point, you know, it's time to grow, it's time to expand. You know, land costs are, it's one of those biggest, you know, it's their biggest hiccup. So when you look north of Temple, pressure coming out of Paulding County, I worked for Paulding County for over ten years. Paulding is now kind of eaten so much of that apple of just bring your development, come on, come on, come on. And as probably anyone here knows, you know, in the mid-nineties, Paulding may have had forty thousand people in ninety-five. Yeah, so, well, it, so we went from, they went from forty thousand to maybe a hundred and seventy-five thousand now. So what Paulding is looking at is from taking sixty-one west, which is the Temple zip code, and go into a minimum one-acre lot and try to, you know, to slow it down from all the dense pack. And what that means is, let me translate that, it's national builders. So when you get in density, you get on sewer, you get on slabs, you get the forty-foot lot width. Bill's seen it in Douglasville, you've seen the national builders. They come into your office, they pull twenty-five building permits at one time and go start twenty-five homes at one time. I mean, they come into the community and they're out, you know. So when you, when you get them out of sewer, then you get back to local, homegrown builders that are building privately for individuals, which is what I see in the county. You know, it's local builders, you know, and most of our homes are three thousand-plus square feet that we're seeing coming into the county. So they're more kind of the custom home, or the McMansion, or the dream home, the second home, what I'm trying to say, you know, not a starter home. Villarica is looking at annexing in a pretty good-sized tract, you know, where the Waffle House and Hardee's is at sixty-one and I-20 and Villarica. Behind that track, they're looking at annexing in some property to do apartments. So they're looking at adding more multifamily in Villarica. I say that to say that you're next, you know. So as a city, y'all will either decide, do we or do we not, you know, want that density? Can we serve that density, you know? Do we have the fire flow? Do we have the sewer capacity? You know, so those are, those are pressures that haven't got to you yet, but they're just, how far Villarica, six, seven miles? Is this six, seven miles? Seven miles down the road. So those are, in Carrollton, they're building the apartment complex there for also Carroll EMC, coming up one thirteen. So, you know, from the cities, they're pushing out, you know, y'all are kind of the last land. You know, so, but you're doing the right thing. And that's what we're here tonight to talk about, is planning for that. It's going to be in the next five years and ten years. And those other cities, you know, we all got war stories and we all got success stories. So, and I'm sure Bill's got a whole box full too, from the city of Douglasville. But that's kind of what we're seeing at the county level. Is that from a county level, when we, what I'm recommending out of my office is when developers are coming and looking for that density, we're pushing them towards the cities. Because the cities do offer police, fire, I mean, not fire, because the county has the fire, but police, water and sewer. Because those are the three things that we need to get the density. You need that water and sewer, which is what y'all have, which means they're going to start coming, you know, eventually. Once they burn through the existing lots that they have. Bill, what did I leave out?
I think you're fine. And Mr. Mayor, if you want to cover a few questions at this point, or?
Sure, anyone on the panel want to have a question for Mr. Skipper?
How was that? We were talking about the south side, that, you know, is industrial and we've got some people wanting to put some of these.
Yeah. What is our stance as a city on that? Are we not, or we don't want that? Are we willing to keep that industrial? Or we?
We'll talk about that.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
That'd be one of those, right? Because that was what we was, we was trying to protect it for y'all. And let me say this as a former developer. The same parcels that your industrial guys wants, is the exact same one your residential guy wants. And, and let me say this as a former developer, um, the same parcels that your industrial guys wants, is the exact same one your residential guy wants. I want two turns off the interstate, because I can tell you directions. If I give you three turns or four turns, can you remember?
But the reality is nowadays, who actually listens to the directions?
Well, but, but if you look at, right, but when you look at all your major developments, there'll be two turns. You know, your, your big, like, department complex, get off I twenty, turn left on Commerce Drive. The, the Carrollton Industrial Park, get off Highway twenty-seven, turn south, turn right on Buffalo, you know, you're there, turn right, dead end into the industrial park. Villarica, get off the interstate, take sixty-one, one-on-one north, dead end into the industrial park. In contrast, look at Buffalo Creek Technology Park, on the bypass in Carrollton. How many turns does it take to get there? If you think about it, you know, get off one thirteen, come to Carrollton, get on the bypass, go past it, turn around, you know, through the median break, come back to it. You know, so, those are those things that, you know, when, when you're, if you're that guy that's trying to get your trucks in, like Janice Trucks, he loves to be, pop off the interstate, you're right there in my shop, aren't you? They want the same things. Why does that developer want that right there? Is it Lucas, Lu- Luke Road? Right. Pull off I twenty, what's first thing? Look, he's within one mile of the interstate, everybody's working from Douglasville, or in Atlanta, you know what I mean? There's a shoot on out I twenty, looking for affordable housing. Two turns off the interstate, I'm at home, and I'm in, and I got angles and everything to the right. So, but, you, you know, that, that's kinda getting into, you know, with my, my planning degree is, is what I tell everyone is, to explain planning to someone, explain to them what they can understand. We can go to any city in the United States, and if we find the grocery store, it'll be on the right-hand side of the road, because mama buys milk going home. She don't buy it going to work. You think about it. So, you pull right into the grocery store, you turn right out, and you go home. Waffle House is on the right-hand side, going to work.
Waffle House Capital has probably best real estate acquisition company there is.
You, you turn right in, right out. Gas, when you're taking, you know, when, when you're, uh, you look at Quick Trip and Race Track going into Carrollton from Villarica, it's on the right-hand side of the road. Everybody pulls in, fill up on Eden, so, when you start looking at all those businesses, they know more about us and our habits than we do. They know, because no one wants to make that turn and go across four lanes or cross traffic, you know what I mean? Because that guy's just pounding on your rear end, you know, when you're trying to make that left-hand turn, versus you just whip right in there to the right, hit the Quick Trip, and whip out to the right, and you're right back in traffic. So, those will be those things, when you're laying your city out, you know, that's exactly what the developers are gonna be looking for. When I get off I twenty, I gotta light to turn left, and then I gotta light to whip right into your industrial park, so. But I told Bill, short visits make good neighbors, so I don't quit right there unless y'all have any questions, so.
We've, we've got a couple of those builders that you were talking about, that, like Trademark Homes, they're building here also.
Right.
And they're one of the ones that take out twelve, fifteen permits at a time. So, they, they will build out what they've got pretty quick, but at the rate they're going.
Trademark, and when you go down one thirteen, um, the road that goes to the subdivision Tommy Lee lives in, that neighborhood, just before you get to Abilene, or what I call Abilene, I've been around here a lot for too long. No, not Hickory Level, it'll be on the right, where the Sharpe Creek Flakey is. They developed on four acre lots. They wanted half acre lots, kinda back to those development pressures, subject systems. Now they're not doing that, now they're just cutting up, going down the road, so. So, that's why you're seeing that, you're going back to Carrollton, not seeing the nice subdivision entrance, because it's back into that asphalt and grating. Cost of construction, so.
Positive thing on that, though, is you get a higher caliber resident that's gonna spend money locally, hopefully, and, um, shop here, you get nicer homes, you get, which comes with a reduction of crime and all kinds of other contributing factors.
What school board wants.
Yep.
Yeah, they, they wanna make sure those are, you know, those three thousand price homes, you know, to get those big schools now, so. But can y'all think, I mean, I mean, that, is there something going on in Temple, we don't, you know, we may not know a lot at the county level, you know, something more besides the train? Appreciate it. All right, well, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, next we've got Matt Roden, and, uh, Matt's gonna talk to us about what he's doing, and what he hopes to do, and.
He got a big project here.
And so, uh, uh, recently, he's had to demolish a couple of things, but that's prepared to do other things. Thank you all.
Oh, thank you. Uh, had to tear some things down, obviously, because they were unsafe, didn't want buildings falling in on anybody's head. Kinda have a plan, and, and kinda touch on what he was saying, uh, we got people moving here to Temple. I like seeing the pipe farms go away, these neighborhoods that haven't developed and sitting empty for a long time. But in hopes, like, with the four acre tracks and the one acre tracks, that we get the higher caliber homes, and to develop downtown, most of everything's moved closer to the interstate. We got industrial on one side, we got, you know, grocery and Waffle House, et cetera, on the other. Hopefully, one way, one day we'll have, you know, hotels and things like that there, and have a downtown area where people can shop, have restaurant, near a restaurant or two there, little boutiques, um, office space available. I have an idea of potentially, like, a shared office space, where somebody would have access as needed, real estate agents, things like that, with a key five entry, almost like a gym or a tanning bed placed in the middle of the night. The buildings we tore down in the back, I have plans to build parking out there. Most all the buildings downtown are three thousand square feet, give or take a hundred. Hopefully, I'm gonna, my plan is to almost cut them in half, down the middle, so you have rear entry and front entry. Most people don't eat three thousand square foot of space. So, that'll double the amount of spaces we have there, and get more businesses in. Railroad is a huge contributing factor to that, because they go through Villarica, Brainman, Marietta, Cartersville. They're tooting their horn, they're going slow, it's minimal disruption. In Temple, they don't, you know, everybody here knows, they don't do that. They just boil on the horn for a mile and a half through there, doing forty miles an hour. Kinda hard for me to build out buildings and get tenants in those buildings when the railroad's just shaking glass out of the building. I got a plan, I'm willing to spend the money to do it. Probably gonna really get aggressive first quarter of next year, and really start making some moves, getting all that mess cleaned up, first of all, and then just go from there. Any, any cooperation in working with the city, my goal, as far as parking, sidewalks, pedestrian access. I have a lot across the street that's currently zoned industrial. I'd like to get with the city and start getting that rezoned. Tossing around the idea of a farmer's market there, uh, little weekend booth rentals, not necessarily to, not naive enough to think I'd make a profit on it, this twenty-five dollar booth rental, the reality is gonna pay for maintaining the place, but it'd bring people in, it'd bring, bring foot traffic, pedestrians, and it'd bring, uh, you know, people, once they're there, and it creates the presence, and maybe we can get them into some of the businesses we bring in downtown. And then all the influx of housing, hopefully, like I said, higher caliber residents, um, that are willing to spend money. And then we can get some good businesses in there, and quality.
Matt, is there any, um, thoughts of, so, I don't know, I know you own a lot of projects, but, um, you know, I know we've been coming around a while back about possibly, like, Villarica, a small amphitheater or something that we could have, we could have, you know, right now, when we do Founder's Day, we do it at the senior center. Anytime I do anything, we bring the senior center. And one of the things that, that we've thought about is, is there's a way we can get to bring people back to downtown, like, I agree with what you're saying, the boutiques, other possible restaurants, that's good, but.
I, I know exactly what you're talking about, I, I, I thought that, so, we have a limited amount of space to work with, obviously. Primary, the most of the back lot where the huge pile of bricks, I'm sure everybody's seen this, is gonna be parking. There's a double lot, um, that, kinda in the middle of town, it's all grown up, I'm sure everybody's seen it, so it's a double lot. The gentleman who owns it, I've been extremely persistent trying to purchase it from him, knocking on his door, calling him, he actually hung up the phone on me, and called me back a few minutes later, he's like, you get my answer? Yeah, I, you know, I agree between the lines. So, I probably shouldn't share this with everybody, but I am, so as I fix everything up, I'm hoping that as his looks like trash, that something will be done, and he may be motivated to sell at some point. So, I've offered him a substantial cash offer, about three times what he paid for it, I know exactly what he paid for it, uh, and he just, he's not budgeting on it. But that was the goal, if I could get that spot, to make a combination amphitheater slash green space area for public use, um, you know, just make it a real nice area, water fountain, you know, things like that, and then when we have, if that's like Founder's Day, maybe that could take place there. We'll have a battle with the state a little bit on shutting the street off, but.
Well, it was that thing that you talked about, because.
It's easier to ask for forgiveness and permission.
We talked, we've talked about this, I know all you guys have heard this, made it to there. But, trying to get a reason for people to come back to downtown, okay, because everything has moved to the interstate and, 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 some of the, you know, some of the little towns in America just kinda blow away, because nobody's there, and kind of, and I appreciate your will to restore that. But, you know, we have something that, in Temple, that no other city has, and that this is the very first school bus in the nation was here. And it would be amazing to be able to do something, if you had a statue, a replica, something like that of that old horse drawn, two church views in it, like, that they drove around and picked up children to take them to school. I mean, that's, that, that's, so, something like that.
I've contacted a couple of artists that I know, um, one of them's a friend of mine, and about maybe doing something like that, like, where that empty lot is, there's an entire brick wall there, maybe painting a mural or something, but I wouldn't wanna do that unless I could acquire that property, make a green space area for public use. But, yeah, just bringing people back to downtown, uh, because right now, the only people there is KRG, uh, and Robinsons, which is only a couple days a week.
In the library.
In the library, yeah, but I'm talking about that little strip there, but, uh, but it's, uh, yeah, I heard somebody, we fill the parking lot up there all the time, and I heard somebody making a comment down at the store the other day, they're like, why are they taking up all these parking spots? Like, if we weren't here, it'd be empty, it'd just be, you know, it wouldn't be nothing here, it'd just be crumpled bricks laying on the ground and stuff like that, so.
Where is the lot that you're talking about, the double lot?
Um, your Temple Automotive is, or was, so, the lot just to the right of that, between John Baxter's building, uh, which Harts Parts, I think is the name of the company, just moved in there, and it's, uh, it's actually three lots there. There's one next to Harts Parts that stays mowed, I own that one, it's just a fourteen by one hundred, and then the other two are just grown up with pulp salad, and everything else, and rats, and all kinds of stuff in there. That's the one Temple Bishop owns, from Villarica, he's a attorney. Yep, uh, I actually was talking with him on the phone today about three or four cases he's working on for me, um. He's just, I asked him about selling, I have him on the phone, you know, I'm like, he's talking about stuff, I'm paying him a paycheck, to do stuff for me, I'm like, hey, man, what about that property? Click, what, oh, maybe he got disconnected, he calls me right back, he's like, did you get your answer? I'm like, yeah, you're, you're correct.
Yeah, that's the one that the front, so, uh, he had to clean this.
Yeah, he had to clean it up, and I offered him, like I said, three times what he paid for it. Just because my, like, like I envisioned, I wanna make a green space area, amphitheater, I won't make any money off of it, but it'll bring the foot traffic, and it'll bring people a reason to come to town, and then as we develop the other buildings and, and remodeling and things like that, and get them leased, then I can get a, a higher caliber tenant, and I can collect better rent than three hundred dollars a month I get on the end, and I can put nice places in there.
You bought Mr. Taylor's property?
All of them, uh, along with the lot across the street, and I'm working on some other stuff with, uh, John and Doug as well, and then the lot out back from the edge of where the church is, all the way to James Street.
When you say the lot across the street, you're talking about across the railroad track?
On the corner of Rose.
Yep, well, that's where I envisioned one day, maybe put a farmer's market in there. Yeah, we have a lot out back with a monster pile of bricks, and some trees that we tore out and all that, and it goes to James Street. And then also the Lewis's, their waste, bought out one as well. They have our eight boardworks.
If we play back a year and a half ago, Mr. Ragland, with our comprehensive plan committee, and then you went talking with, uh, we talked with Planning Commission, and we talked about whether you just abandoned downtown and, and look at building a new downtown somewhere. And where we are today, I think, uh, we're seeing, uh, a renaissance for downtown going on before our very eyes. Now, so, if you look ahead for the next five years, uh, there's always sorts of possibilities, and I would say to this group, as you, when you look at downtown, we're gonna hear from the library in just a minute, but with the post office, the library, two churches, and the things that, that Matt's working on, and then, uh, across the track to that development, uh, I think one of the tasks that, uh, the mayor, the planning division has, is how do we make sure that as we look at the future in terms of land use, that we provide expansion opportunities for the downtown business district? And, uh, that doesn't mean, uh, everything would be stores, but other things, as Matt says, will attract people downtown. So, I'd say that's one of the challenges that this body will have over the next several weeks, as you look at things.
Bill, aren't there three churches downtown?
Uh, I was just thinking of the Baptists and the Methodists, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
That little ground lot building, they put a church in there, they're leasing that building, um, about twelve, fourteen members. I don't see a lot of boardroom at that. They don't have any parking.
Is the block building on the right?
The block building on the right, um, that, so the block building on the corner there, and the property that runs up to the other block building, the one that used to be, uh,
The Forest?
Yeah, the Forest. That, uh, is an Asian lady in Villarica that owns that, she's a dentist, I've talked to her about purchasing that, and she's smoking crack, and she, there's no way. A hundred and some thousand dollars of like that is falling in, so, that's currently where they're parking up.
The church is in the other forest?
Yes, yeah, I don't know how long they'll be there, I hope they're successful, but the reality is, I don't think it'll last long, I think it'll be pretty short-lived.
I'm sure.
Something concerns me, the infrastructure in downtown, as far as the, the water and the sewer and things like that. As I get things in there, over the next couple of years, those are gonna be contributing factors to what I can do.
And I'm sure y'all will be wanting to talk with Matt, a couple more decades as we, over the next several months, as we work on different things, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Roden? Thank you for sharing your vision with us.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna hear from, uh, uh, representative from the West Georgia Regional Library System. We were talking about the library, but as I said, looking at the libraries being, you know, an example of what we would look at on making plans for the future of cultural activities. Justin Nobles, Assistant Director of Technology, we appreciate him changing his schedule so he could do with us tonight.
Well, I, uh, I appreciate, uh, the, well, uh, the, the library system appreciates, uh, the opportunity to, uh, literally have a seat available, uh, for the, the future planning for, um, for the city of Temple. Um, and, and I just wanna sort of preface my whole discussion here, that, um, I'm the Assistant Director of Technology, which basically means IT. So, I sit behind computers and fix computers all day long, but this isn't my forte, um, but I appreciate nonetheless you guys, uh, hearing from me. It, I, I know it wasn't planned to be the, to be this way, um, but, uh, it's actually, um, kind of a good thing that I'm following behind you, because, you know, I, I think one of the things that we'll see, um, with the Ruth Holder Public Library, is as the, the downtown, sort of has its renaissance, you know, the, the, the library gets to sort of reap the benefits of that, and, um, and I'm trying to think, um, so just kind of give you a context of the, of, of the regional library system. We, uh, our library system that serves five counties, Carroll, Douglas, Harrelson, Horton, Paulding, um, and we have nineteen member libraries, so Temple is one of those locations. And so part of, uh, part of what we do is sort of, you know, monitor trends, uh, throughout all of libraries, but particularly in Temple, um, as a new library, they've really had an opportunity to sort of, um, kind of, you know, in. But particularly in Temple, um, as a new library, they've really had an opportunity to sort of, um, kind of, you know, invent what they do on their own. If you'll recall, the Temple Library opened in December of two thousand sixteen. Um, and, uh, you know, I, we keep metrics across all of our libraries, but one of the things that I think you'll see, and I have copies of these for everybody, um, is it's not very common that all of the metrics that we take have sort of, are on the uptrend and, and Ruth Holder Library is. Um, they've seen an increase particularly since the, the increase in funding and, and by way of that, you know, being able to purchase more books and be open more hours. Um, that occurred in May of two thousand eighteen. Um, we've seen an increase in all of our metrics, computer sessions, the amount of people that come in and use our library computers. Um, the visits, the number of people that come into the library to use it, uh, program, uh, numbers, program attendance, um, Wi-Fi sessions, actually. You know, we, we, we provide free Wi-Fi for all of the libraries. Um, and, uh, and believe it or not, our Wi-Fi sessions out, outnumber the number of physical, um, sessions on all of our computers. And that's sort of a trend across all of our libraries, but particularly in Temple, um, because the, you know, the, if you've ever been into that library, space is sort of a high commodity for that particular location. And, uh, and we've, we've pretty much maxed out the number of computers that can be in that facility. Um, you know, and, and we've got thoughts on, on ways to, um, you know, to sort of move some of the space around and, and whatnot that may allow for more of those. Um, and, and particularly, you know, that's sort of on the top of our mind because, um, the state, uh, the Georgia State Legislature this year provided, uh, uh, well, every year they provide, um, what they call, um, libtech money. So it's money that is allotted to, to all public libraries for the improvement of technology that is associated with the public. So any public computers, any public printing, any of those sorts of things. Every library in our region, uh, it, it receives some of that money. This year, um, we received an extra pot of money that will allow for the purchase of technology that is strictly used for the census. And so the libraries, uh, across the state, but particularly in West Georgia, are, um, going to be a part of that process. Because this is the first year that the census is online. And the census department is really pushing, if, you know, kept your ear to the ground on that, is really pushing for people to do it online. Well, not everybody has the ability to do that. So libraries, and particularly the Temple Library, Ruth Holder Library, um, we have a dedicated pot of money where we're going to buy technologies that's strictly for the census. So if somebody can come in off the street unimpeded, does not leave a library card and can come in, we have the internet, we've got the infrastructure, they can come in and take the census. And that's going to, that's going to be the case across all of the libraries in West Georgia. Um, and so going back to sort of our mission statement, um, you know, our mission statement is to provide for the cultural, educational, and recreational needs of our, our citizens. And so, you know, culturally, you know, with the new museum coming in town, um, you know, one of the things that we sort of pride ourselves as being a, sort of a public institution is being able to partner with local organizations, with city departments, um, and we've done that. Um, I know in a previous role of mine, I taught, um, computer classes. And for, you know, months on end, I would teach computer classes in partnership with the senior center. A lot of the, um, the folks that came to those classrooms were from the senior center. Um, and so, you know, educational is the programs that we do, the storytime sessions, those, those things. And then the recreational needs by way of, you know, providing access to books and movies and, and, and digital content as well. Um, and so sort of to kind of hone down into the, the planning of Temple is I think as we see a renaissance, hopefully with downtown, we'll also see sort of a renaissance with the library. I say renaissance, we haven't been open that long to experience that, but I think we can, you know, get some of the fruits that come from all the hard work, uh, that, that happens in, in downtown. And, and I don't think I mentioned this, but, um, I tried to think of the number of our libraries that are literally situated in the downtown community, and, and I can't think of any of them. Um, Temple is, um, and, and I don't want to say this on record without looking at every single location, but I'm quite sure that Temple is, is the only library that we have in West Georgia in our system that is in the walking path of the downtown area. And I think that really, from a planning perspective, that really allows for some wonderful ways that that library can be used. And so, um, thank you for letting me talk, and I'm going to answer any questions that come my way.
Anyone have a question for Mr. Nobles?
How good is that Wi-Fi? Can I disconnect while you use yours? Pretty close.
Just for observation, another one thing that, uh, Justin said, I think, as we look at the development of our, uh, City of, of Temple Museum, that there's a lot of links that can take place between what we're doing in the library and, uh, things with the museum. Uh, and I, even though we have a conversation, Lisa, uh, come forward, please. This is Lisa Jacobson, who is the new director of the, uh, City Recreation Department, and, uh, we're making a lot of changes here. Uh, but one of the things that Mayor Council also did is not only is she director of the Recreation Department, she's, uh, also over the museum. That's will be part of her domain. So we're looking at how do you, how do you tie in things with our overall recreation program and what might take place at the museum. And I can see the library of that being, uh, a good, uh, involvement also in this. But, uh, you don't say hello to these folks, she's, she's running, uh, but, uh.
Hello.
I said I wanted her to come just so that, uh, the planning commission members, uh, would, uh, would be able to put a name and a face together. And, uh, so if you do something in recreation, uh, she's a person to get in touch with.
Thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else need to ask Mr. Nobles anything? Well, we appreciate the information you shared, and it's, uh, very encouraging to see the, uh, the trending of and the usage of our library and, uh.
Then I think it's only going to get better.
I see that, that's all, that just shows it's going up. The name of the library is a very revered, uh, young, very revered lady in our town.
Oh, Ms. Laura?
No, Ms. Holder.
Ms. Holder.
Oh, I'm sorry. We very, we're very, her great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, our next speaker we called attention to earlier, she's kind of pitch hitting, uh, uh, both for Daniel Jackson and, uh, and to some extent, uh, uh, for J.R. Charles. But, uh, Ryan OMB, Director of Membership Engagement at the Chamber of Commerce, and she's going to talk with us, uh, as she sees fit about commercial development and any comments she wants to make on industrial development.
Well, my, um, my, speaking on industrial and development will be short. Um, J.R. and Daniel are actually at, um, GEDA in Savannah, and, um, I've been getting, uh, tips from the two of them all afternoon. So I apologize in advance for not giving you the information that Daniel or J.R. would give you, but I'll do the best I can. But I, I do want to talk some, um, and I'll, I'll get to that later, on small business development in Main Street and downtown, um, that I can talk about. So I'll do my short version for, uh, for J.R. and Daniel. Uh, most of you know that we are, um, within the, the chamber is under the umbrella of Carroll Tomorrow, which was started in two thousand one. Um, since it, it, it's, um, it started and we started with, um, Advantage Carroll, um, in the last eighteen years, we thought about one point seven billion dollars in capital investments into the, into this county. Um, in the last six months, or the first six months of this year, um, we saw five million dollars in capital investment and about one point seven million in new payroll. So, um, the county's in a great position and we're, we're continuing to grow. Um, the Carroll County Development Authority, um, helped develop the Temple Industrial Park. Um, currently the, um, the Development Authority owns Phase Three, which is twenty-nine acres. And, um, they are looking at, um, Phase Four for expansion into Phase Four on that. Um, as, as you talked about then, the, um, the I-twenty and one thirteen intersection and the seventy-eight and one thirteen intersections are a natural transportation hub. So that's where you're going to see a lot of the growth in the coming years. Um, and, and, you know, with the, um, the increase in, um, in residential growth in the community. And also the, um, the, the test scores and the, and the, and the way that the, um, county schools, especially Temple Schools, are continuing to grow and improve. That's very impressive, and it's something that we tout a lot when, um, when we're out talking to prospective, um, industry, they want to know that, and that's very impressive. Our numbers, um, were just in, um, just, um, released today, I think, and I think the graduation rate in Temple, I've got it written down here somewhere, is ninety-three percent. Ninety-one point five percent, which is phenomenal, I think the state average is in the low eighties. So it's, it's very impressive, um, what our county is doing, um, for education. Um, one of the things that, and Daniel, when I spoke to him this afternoon, that they're talking about at GEDA is workforce. And that's something that the chamber really, um, is, is, um, focused in on, you know, our unemployment rate. We always tell, uh, people when they're in the chamber, the good news is our unemployment rate is three point nine percent, the bad news is it's three point nine percent. Uh, we're working real closely with, um, uh, I, I know you guys are probably familiar with the Education Collaborative. We're working closely with the public schools, the, the private school, West Georgia Technical College, and the university to ensure that we have a trained and skilled workforce, which is, is, is very important for you guys as you start to move forward and tr- and bring new industry into the community that we have the workforce to, to put into the jobs in these communities and currently, uh, uh, into the businesses. Currently about fifty percent of the, um, of the workforce lives, works, and plays in Carroll County, so that, that's great for us. Um, but we want to make sure that we are doing what needs to be done, that, that we, so that we can have, um, a skilled and trained workforce, um, as we bring, um, new, new development into our community. Um, and kind of backing up and, and talking about the, the downtown, um, what I work closely with, um, on the chamber, I've been with the chamber since January, so I'm, I'm pretty much a newbie with the chamber. But prior to that, I worked for Aaronoff Realty out of Montgomery, so I spent eleven years in, um, small business development, retail development, um, with Aaronoff. Um, one of the first things that I did when I came on board at the chamber was, um, start working real closely with our Main Street directors. Uh, we have seven cities in our county and three main streets in the, in the county, which is, uh, an unusual thing in the state of Georgia. We're on one of the only counties in the state to have three main street programs. Um, so I've been working real closely with, um, with our Main Street directors, in fact, I met with them today, to come up with a comprehensive program to support our downtown areas and to really, um, promote those areas. Um, one of the, I've worked with Jessica Reynolds, who is, um, with the State Main Street Program. That might be something that you guys want to look at as you move forward and plan for your downtown area. Jessica does a great job with, um, you know, with helping you form, um, a, a strategic plan and a game plan for your downtown area, whether it's for, um, you know, for entertainment purposes, or if you've got retail space and restaurant space and, and that kind of thing. Um, I'm working with the Georgia Tourism Director to position Carroll County as a destination. Um, and one of the things that we're, we're looking at is when was the last time you played in your own backyard? And looking at things that we have in our county, we had, um, a, um, a tourism assessment done in two thousand twelve, and we're looking at maybe doing another one of those so that we can really pinpoint the areas in our community that make this a destination. Um, and Temple is, is poised for that because we're right off of I-twenty, so it's an easy place to, to get to. Uh, we want to invite people from Atlanta to come to Carroll County. There's so many things to do here, Temple has a lot of things going on, it looks like, you know, you, you guys have got some great plans for downtown, the library downtown. So we, we really are poised, I think, in this community to really grow that downtown development. Um, J.R. and, and Daniel and you guys are going to take care of the industrial stuff, and, and, and J.R. can probably speak better to that when he comes to visit you next time. But I'm very excited about the downtown area and growing that area and really creating another hub in Carroll County as a destination. Um, we're working on itineraries for each individual, for each city. So when you're, you know, when you're in Temple, here are the things you can do while you're here, whether it's, um, you know, um, touristy things and outdoor things. And we're coming up with twenty-five plates that we love, and it's twenty-five different restaurants throughout the county that you can go and visit and, and eat at those, those different restaurants. Um, so we're really, I think, coming up with some great things to, to, to help peo- people understand what we have here, um, and, and come out and, and, and visit, come to Temple and, you know, learn, come to the museum, come to the library, you know, learn about the first bus, I think that's the coolest thing ever. And, and, you know, I envision in downtown having, you know, instead of train rides, you have little bus rides through downtown and, you know, I, I, I just got real excited listening to you talk about that. Because that, we were talking earlier, industry is, is great and it, and it really is, um, important for our communities to grow. But small businesses are the backbone of our community and, um, and that, that's where, that's my wheelhouse. Um, so I get really excited about that, and, and I apologize for getting off task with, um, with what Daniel and J.R., but, but that's something I can talk about. So, um, but, but, you know, I, I can't speak on their behalf really because Daniel Jackson knows, has forgotten more than I'll ever know, um, about this business. But, but I can tell you that they are working hard every day and, and looking to get people in those, especially in, um, in, in Phase Three and, and trying to get, um, industry here and, and working to do that. And I brought J.R.'s card in case you guys have a question, I'll give you his card because I probably can't answer it. But, uh, but I can answer, you know, talk to the, um, to bring in more people to your community and, and position in Temple as a destination for folks coming into our community and, and, and new families moving to our community. They're looking, um, at, at different things to do to, to get people to stay here and ultimately to keep their money here. You know, we want them to, to come and visit, but more importantly, we want them to leave their money here. So, um, I'm, I'm excited to hear the plans that you guys have, and we want to work with you as a chamber and Carroll Tomorrow, work with you as you plan and grow. We want to be part of that and, and offer whatever assistance, um, we can and, and work closely with you as you, as you grow. And it's exciting what's going on here, so it's probably not what you wanted to hear, but.
Uh, one point I'd like to make, maybe clarify, and Mr. Brightman was in this conversation too, Ruth Holder. Uh, and there are sources out there that have this, uh, information a little bit off, but actually the first school bus, we had the first school bus in the state of Georgia. It wasn't the nation, but that was the first school bus in the state of Georgia. I don't think that puts a big damper on anything.
I don't have any reason to leak Georgia's.
Same thing, you're a Ruth Holder, hell, that's that. Yeah, but that's, uh, that's a biggie too, that's a biggie too. Anyone have questions for Ms. Olmey?
Just, just, uh, the Main Street Program, what are the other two in the county? I know one.
Uh, Bowden, Carrollton, and Billerica.
Okay, Bowden, okay, I knew Carrollton, yeah, I would tell you that, Bowden, that's what I was trying to, yeah, okay, thank you.
And we're working with the, with the main streets to, to have a comprehensive program, so it's not one or the other, it's, it's Carroll County Main Street. So that, those are some of the things we're working on with those guys to have a comprehensive program to promote all three at one time.
It's been real successful, I know, uh, Mr. Boggs owns a lot of those properties through there, they have little loft apartments and everything, it's great.
Yeah, it is, and, and, you know, when we moved here twenty-two years ago, there was nothing in downtown Billerica, very little in Carrollton. So we, I think we all know it can be done, it's, you know, it, it, and, and you guys are in a great location, you know, right off the interstate, it's, it's a perfect location.
An ambition of something similar to Carrollton, uh, you know, my mind, I'm working with architect to try to put it together, so.
It's exciting.
And to add to that, you know, I, I live in Billerica, so I was amazed at what I am, you know, did to downtown. You know, and, and you can tell it, you know, going home on Fridays, you can tell, there's something going on in there. If you watch Life Turn Red a couple of times before you go under. There's a lot of stuff, but at the same time, Carrollton, Billerica has been extremely successful. And what we are seeing in the county is these barn, uh, festivals, music festivals. Um, I'm sure if, if you haven't heard about, um, Little Big Jam down in Bowden. Um, and, and that's just one of those things that kind of started out pretty small, but it's now, you know, now, now they're holding two. You know, it was once a year, now they're going twice a year. Um, it really seems to think, you know, that, that music is one of, you know, the arts is one of those key components to, you know, because when you're looking at down, like you said, down, down Billerica, you know, now, you know, it's the Mexican place, you've got the uncorked and then.
You have a variety in downtown Billerica, you have restaurants.
And Mica lives in one of the lofts above, you know, you know, I got a cousin that lived in downtown in lots of these likes. Man, I love it, man, you, you get out and you walk.
Oh, it's so cool, they got little patios on the back. You can go out the back of the buildings, like behind Santa Maria and stuff like that, the little patios back there.
And they love it.
It's so cool.
But, you know, that's his generation, you know, and I think that's kind of, you know, sometimes hard for us to think. We think in our age group, and, um, and I'm older than most, so, but, you know, just talking to him, that's, man, he absolutely loves, I don't want a yard, I don't want to cut grass. Why don't wanna yawn, I don't wanna cut grass. Cause I don't wanna cut grass, man, I wanna live and, and, and be able to walk downtown, I don't wanna drive nowhere.
That's why my son lives in Woodstock, they love Woodstock, cause of all that, what they do there.
Maybe it's cause I come from a younger generation, but I can kinda understand that.
Right, he, he just loves.
I don't need a weed eater, I don't need to own that, you know.
He said, why don't we be anywhere outside?
I can walk to a restaurant.
Right, walk downtown, he says, I got everything I need. But then walking just, and he, like you said, right there in downtown. And, and I think that's your vision.
It is.
Um, and, and ultimately, you know, when we look as, as, as community planners, it takes that one homegrown guy. That's got that personal investment that he wants to see his town succeed. You know, look, you know, look, Laura Richards with Southland, with Greenland. You know, the, the gentleman that bought all the ti- uh, buildings down in Sonora. You know, that was one guy went in there and said, this place is gonna succeed and, you know, and you gotta gentleman like right here that's saying. Right.
Sonora's that place.
But it all started with a guy like you that said, you know what, I got a vision. And then, and then everybody gets behind it and supports him. But it takes that one guy to, to drag all the rest of us over the finish line sometimes.
One comment, this relates, uh, to Mr. Vogons, when he's talking about the train coming through and the noise and all this. We have, I don't recall the exact figure, but we really looked into the possibility of getting quiet community status for Temple. And, uh, the figure, I don't recall exactly, but it's a pretty pricey figure. But that's still something that we might, you know, look for, plan toward and, you know.
That would be great.
That would be awesome to get the, the whistles turned off, you know, after cer- at certain hours.
Depending on the cost of that, work for my accountant, see if, you know, some kinda joint venture with the city and, and my corporation to pay for that. To make it happen. Cause that's definitely.
Instead of having a block party, maybe you have a train party.
You know, I'm amazed, I kinda have a lot of that.
You just blow the street.
They live at the corner of Otis and Sage and, you know, the tracks right there, they somehow know they sleep at night. I don't, I guess you figured out how to block it out.
JR got the same girl on the phone, she's like, oh, we're the customer, hold on a second, we got a train, I'll call you back. He can't even talk on the phone.
That's an issue.
It's rough. I eat up the corners the whole time, they go through there and they just toot, and it's real slow and toot, and that's it. And it's, it's like, man, why can't they do that when they come through Temple?
Any more questions for Mr. Holden? Yes, sir.
There's one thing that we don't have here in Temple that I think we need and, and we've had people ask about it. Maybe the chamber could send somebody our way, but we don't have a hotel. The hotels go on either side. Uh, Villarica has hotels, Greenland has hotels. We have the places for them, we have lots, we have zoning. But if anybody requires about, uh, where to put a hotel in Carroll County.
I'll, I'll ask JR about that, I mean, he would, okay, absolutely.
But I was thinking, I'll ask you this too, I was thinking, the lot down at the industrial park, we just annexed into the city. It's on the corner of Highway one thirteen and, uh, East Wood Road. It's where Archer Weston is, has leased, putting, I think they got a little, uh, portable concrete. Would that be a good place for a hotel, right there in front of the industrial park? It's four, four point nine eight acres.
Is, is that two turn things? You got somewhere there?
You put, put your hotels and your restaurants and all that close to the interstate.
There's a lift.
Not residential property.
There's a lift station at the bottom of East Wood Road, yes. But it's, uh, it's almost five way to track and, uh, you get to it from East Wood rather than one thirteen. But I just think, and it's for sale now.
The thing is, they run, they run like a herd mentality. When one comes, then they all come, you know? But they're running that pack, you know? But, 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 they will come, it's just, I like everything that's one.
I don't wanna see just some five by nine motel. I'd like to see something, some floor to.
Well, and, I, I believe you would be a great location, because we are that, um, at Little Talaputza Park. Um, we, we catch everyone that is either on the morning or afternoon side of Atlanta. They just, they don't wanna fight it. So they come to Little Talaputza Park, set up a camper, wake up early in the morning and they're out of town. Um, I know we sent a lot of RV repairs up to the RV guy here at the interstate. Um, we, we feed a bunch of work to him, uh, you know, people out on the road and have damage, pulling the park and, and stay the weekends. Um, so we have a lot of, unbeknownst to me, our, RVing has family. We, we're having a family come in and rent up nearly the entire park for one weekend. You know, they, they planned this a year in advance, but that's just kinda neat, you know, that that whole family's coming in to have a family reunion. They all got their RVs.
What if I took my camper, they'd even notice I went partying family.
And then we have, uh, we have festivals down at the park. We have, um, you know, kinda like the medieval times that, that comes to Little Talaputza Park. There's just a lot of, you know, I know it's not in the city limits, but it is right there, you know.
We're gonna get hungry and eat with people in the city limits.
We have a lot of people can offer vaccine, you know, to, uh, frequent the, the truck stops and get gas or whatever, there's nowhere to stay.
No way.
They gotta go on down the road.
Speaking about residential right there, that area, in my personal opinion, it would be a horrible idea.
Oh, yeah.
To have residential right there.
Yeah, they don't, you don't want.
It's only that commercial would be the way to go and put hotels and restaurants and things like that.
Well, actually, I'll just follow right in to what Matt was saying, uh, and then also what, uh, Ms. Walden was saying. And, uh, I do appreciate the cooperation with, uh, from the end of the other people in the county as, as we looked at this. And as he mentioned, uh, the, uh, you know, comprehensive plan and, uh, and looking ahead. Uh, the county, um, was willing in that area south of I twenty, alongside one thirteen, to look at expanding. What they were, uh, looking at in terms of the use of that, uh, has, has been sensible, rather than it just being a residential. Of having a, a good bit of acreage that could be annexed into the city of Temple for industrial and commercial purposes. And, uh, and, and, uh, we do need, uh, obviously, jobs. And I hope it just committed in terms of just telling you where we are on, uh, a couple of things south of I twenty. And, uh, uh, two or three points before I get to that, that, uh, with the cooperation that we have with the county. I think the, the only, uh, thing I see, uh, the city of Temple doing as we look at your future land use and map and plan. Is that, uh, I don't see any, any rationale or any justification or any real benefit. If we talked about expanding city limits, uh, in, uh, virtually any direction other than south of I twenty. Now, some of that will happen as time goes by. You will see, uh, development and some annexations probably going east and west of seventy-eight. And maybe something, uh, north, but in, insofar as, as looking at what I think, uh, we need to focus on, uh, for the future. Is that area, uh, a bit of south of I twenty. Uh, and we are, uh, working, uh, cooperatively, uh, JR Charles and, uh, Daniel. We've had, I think, we've, we've been on four short lists and I can tell you, it's good to get on the short list. But believe me, I tell you by experience, if you don't get selected, it doesn't mean anything, but it's over with. You know, Douglas, well, we were number two to get cash treatment centers of America. We were number two in losing Tyler Perry's entire operation. Uh, and they gone, they gone. But, uh, we've been on the short list of three different big projects. But the site is, is great, the chamber, Carroll tomorrow, they've extended the option on that property. Uh, and so, you know, we could be coming in with a house next week, next month or whatever. But in terms of that overall area, uh, I think that, uh, part of what you need to look at in terms of your future land use. We do need to, to look at, okay, where would the commercial go? And, and Ms. Walden, uh, uh, and, uh, what was stated certainly correct in looking up close to the interstate. Uh, that would be the area you're talking about, would, would be, uh, a, a great, uh, place for looking at, uh, uh, a, uh, a motel. Uh, what we need more than that to get the motel is we need a, a good restaurant. Uh, we don't have anything that would attract, if you go get a, you know, you might, you might get a, uh, hotel six or something. But if you're looking at getting something four, uh, we need also to be attracting, uh, uh, whether it's a Cracker Barrel and, and a Ho Charlie's. Uh, uh, we need something like that to, to draw, that would, that would, uh, bring in a, a high quality, uh, hotel. Uh, but we do have, uh, uh, prospects and industrial on both sides of I, uh, of, of, of one thirteen. Of both East Wood Road and, and south of West Wood Road. Uh, and, uh, and I think that we can see some development beginning to happen on that, uh, real soon. Uh, I think, uh, so one challenge I think that you've got looking at your future land use plan is what did you see happening south of I twenty? You've got industrial land out, where do you see the other industrial building? But where do you look at some commercial, uh, that, uh, would provide a restaurant or two and, and a hotel or two? Uh, and I think that's very key. Uh, another task I think, uh, that this group needs to take a close look at, is when you look at your, uh, the current, uh, zoning map. When you look at the, uh, future land use, uh, north of the downtown area adjacent to the railroad. There's a big area right now that's shown on both zoning and your future land use map as industrial. And at some point in the past, maybe that was put that way because it's adjacent to the railroad. The only problem, there are two problems. There's, there's no way unless the rail, railroad decides to do some kinda siding or something that is, makes any difference that the land is near the railroad. And the only way that you're gonna be able to, to deal effectively with an industrial park, you can have a rail service, but you also gotta have truck service. And, and we start thinking about, how do you want, do you want a hundred, you know, tractor trailer trucks a day just north of downtown? How they gonna get from, from, from being on the, uh, west side of, of, uh, of, uh, Georgia one thirteen down to I twenty? Come through downtown? I mean, there, there is no good way to do that. That land really needs to be looked at and not getting into the politics with who owns it or anything else. I just don't see that that property's gonna ever develop in terms of anything of quality from an industrial development standpoint. It's just not accessibility. So I think the challenge then is what might be done there in terms of that would be, I think, uh, uh, next to the railroad? Not sure. Other than that, uh, we, we are gonna be looking at additional needs for residential that I think you'll have to look at. Uh, the third thing, I think, the challenge, all you for commercial and, and, in particular, is I know we've talked about, uh, at different times. That area, uh, to the east of City Hall on the south side of US seventy-eight. You've got some acreage there that's, I think, the zoning, I think is already there. But I think as you look both east and west on seventy-eight, to see what you might do in terms of anything that would be zoned to commercial. Uh, cause that's a logical place. Unfortunately, we don't have many options left on commercial between seventy-eight and I twenty along one thirteen. It's all, it's pretty much, uh, uh, grown up with, uh, with what you've got down there, including residential. I don't know what might be done if, if you look on the south side of seventy-eight before you get to Jones Barbecue. That, uh, that, that terrain doesn't look very good in terms of anything commercial. But those are some of the challenges I think, uh, you have. Uh, but, uh, commercial, you need to look at where, uh, what's a couple of good possibilities for good shopping centers. Uh, at some, at some point, we will be big enough to, 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 you can have, uh, uh, a shopping center like you got on the south side of I twenty. Then Villarica or something of that nature. Uh, we need to start thinking about where might that be? Uh, and, and, uh, I almost hate to see, uh, that area south of I twenty. But maybe part of that needs to be commercial, cause we need employment centers so much here in this area. Anyway, those are just some thoughts in terms of, uh, with JR comes. He will talk with you in more specific, about some things. Uh, he's doing a good job of, uh, beating the bushes for us and, uh, uh, like I said, Daniel, uh, uh, everybody with the county. Been, uh, been very good on working with City of Temple over the last couple of years as we've been really trying to push forward on this. But be glad to respond any questions anybody has.
In reference to property you're talking about on seventy-eight, you mean it, uh, east of City Hall going down seventy-eight? On the right side of the road?
Two, two things.
Where the property's being located right now?
On, on the south side of seventy-eight, uh, both going toward Villarica, you've got this fairly, what, probably five, eight, ten acres in there. And then, then going toward, uh, uh, Greenland now on the right, uh, uh, most of that is wooded area. From just past, um, Carrollton Street that you get to Center Point Road. But the terrain.
That's, uh, on the right side of the road, that's a pretty large tract, twenty something acres land. The left side of the road, uh, ties the property to the gas station, that's a large tract. And then going the other way on seventy-eight, there's three sides of the road there, it's a set of roads. And those total, I think, around eighty acres right now being pulled. That would be a wonderful commercial location at some point.
So those are things, those are good points and things I think this group needs to look at.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, that, number eleven that you.
Well, actually, I did not try to get anybody to come talk about residential development, because we're gonna get residential development. Good stopping if you want it.
That's true.
So I think the, uh, so I think the, the two keys, I think this group needs to be concerned about. One, we've been talking about what areas do you wanna protect from becoming residential? So that you've got possibilities for commercial and, and industrial. Uh, and then the other is that with the residential you've got, if you look at what the mayor and council have, have been looking at. In terms of, uh, uh, lot size and, and, uh, minimum square footage in terms of what kinda housing stock, uh, are you wanting to see, uh, come to Temple? Because, uh, I can assure you that, that, uh, that it's coming. You just look at what, uh, Villarica had and, and we, we picked up, we've got what, we will have sold probably four or five times as many building permits by the end of this year as we did last year. So, uh, uh, but I think the, the challenge for you on residential is gonna be, uh, what, what kind do you want, uh, to, uh, to see? Cause you're gonna get it one, four or another.
Okay, number twelve, a regional perspective, I don't think that person ever showed up.
She didn't show up and, uh, she probably got, but I think we picked up on that at that time. And that, if I had to, to say that somebody, what they would be here, uh, that would be the person, uh, not saying against her. But, uh, we get a regional perspective, it would have much less direct impact than what you've heard from these folks tonight.
Okay, all right, go ahead with thirteen then.
All right, cause what we do, the, the next time, we will have, uh, JR Charles, uh, will be here. Uh, Matt Wyndham, uh, with the Water Authority. Uh, Matt, when I talked with him about somebody, he, he had a conflict tonight. Uh, and I said, well, Matt, who do you have that might come? He said, I wanna do it myself, because I, I think it's important enough for me to, to do it. And, and obviously, if you're talking about what are you, what are you looking for in terms of your growth and development, you ain't got water. You ain't got development. So, uh, we do need to know what their plans are. So we do need to know what their plans are in terms of providing what quantity of water that we can have here in the Temple area. So he'll be with us next time. And then assuming we get Daniel roped in and get him to come to share with us a little bit too.
All right, item fourteen, any further discussion, anyone wants to offer?
I think we need to mention about the Water Authority is wanting to have that water tank on Ringy Road. Well, we already have one at the high part there. It's a half million gallon tank and they're going to add another one to go along with it, which will help us here in Temple because we're pulling a lot of water from that, that one tank. And they're about to let it out for bid, so they'll start construction on it probably first year this year. I think that's a good plus for us.
I guess we continue to grow and bringing in hotels and restaurants and more residential construction. I mean, the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, all those are huge factors, you know? And as we zone things commercial and create tax revenue from those things, those dollars can be allocated accordingly to pay for that infrastructure.
For you or Mr. Mayor, I think, make the announcement, what good place is one?
Well, I'll be proud to say so. We attended the Carroll County Water Authority meeting this morning and the board approved with unanimous vote to pass a resolution regarding the refunding of our water line. And so we're very thankful for that and we'll proceed forward with that.
That will let us, from the standpoint of all the development we're talking about, make better plans because we had, as you know, almost a four and a half million dollar balloon overdue January one, twenty twenty-one. In fact, being able to spread that over a period of, of years, that will give us funds to be able to do some, some other things in terms of capital improvements.
Any more discussion?
Let's get this.
All right, item number fifteen, any closing comments, vice chair?
No, sir.
Any other ones, closing comments? I'd just like to say, thank you, all right, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Just, just a reminder that your next meeting, now you may end up wanting to have a fourth meeting. We had talked about, first meeting was introduction, this was discussion, your next meeting was decisions. But it may be that we'll need to have a fourth meeting in terms of deciding what you want to do in terms of the, your future land use map and plan. But I would ask that all of you, if you have thoughts on that, let staff know so that when we plan for your next meeting, we'll know if we're planning for, to have more discussion and looking at some preliminary things, then come back with a fourth meeting for, to wrap up or whether you want to try to finish up next time to get together.
It appears Mr. Mayor, the planning commission would be fine with a fourth meeting. And, and have another discussion session and then finalize on the fourth. Got that, Bill?
Yes, sir.
All right. Like to express thanks to the staff for the preparations they made, even preparations that didn't get utilized, but nevertheless, we made for our out of town gentlemen whose travel plans changed. Thank you to our council for being here, the planning commission members, and thank you for our visitors coming and the information that you have shared with us. We can't, we, we leave here knowing a lot more than we came in knowing, and we appreciate that very much. Mr. Vice Chair, you want to adjourn your part of this?
Thanks, sir, motion to adjourn from the planning commission?
Second. All in favor? Mr. Mayor?
Council, motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
I have to put you back into, all in favor?